So this is our legislative meeting for Friday, March third, two thousand and twenty-three, Deschutes County. We'll let some folks kind of come in and join us if there's a few more. So we have nineteen, it looks like already. Whitney, if you want to start us off, setting the pace here.
Thanks, Commissioner DeBon. I'm gonna let Doug lead off with any updates high level. Today's an internally focused call, so we'll base, we'll primarily be looking at the bill report and upcoming hearings that are gonna be coming up next week. There's one bill, I believe, Jen, is that correct, that we need to have the board review? That's a new ad?
There, excuse me, I'm a little sick, but there are now two bills to review. And so it should reflect in that last one that I sent out, it's under Public Health and one's in the assessors.
Perfect. So we'll basically roll through and look at those two bills, upcoming hearings. We have a request to testify from Health Services, and I believe one additional congressionally-directed spending request for the board's consideration today. But with that, Doug, I'm happy to turn it over to you if there's any high-level updates you'd like to provide.
Sure, thanks, Commissioner Whitney. In the car almost to a place where I can park, and I'll turn on my camera, but I'm gonna leave it off for the moment since I'm driving. I think the big issue to update everybody on is Senate Bill six forty-four, which is the bill to allow us to proceed with ADUs in what might be high-risk wildfire zones. Quite a bit of back and forth. There was a hearing this week, Commissioner Adair and Commissioner Chang both testified, as well as Commissioner Buck from Lane County. So we had a good, good panel. Had lots of discussion after the committee kind of internally between legislators, AOC, Lane County, and myself. There's gonna be a dash, dash three amendment prepared. The dash three will make some technical changes and will ensure that if wildfire mapping is not completed, the counties can continue to cite ADUs as long as they use state or, I think it's three twenty-seven standards, don't have it in front of me. But hopefully that amendment will be ready by next week. It's basically an improvement on the dash twos. And they'll, they'll move the bill out of the committee to the floor and then over the House. But it's been, you know, a great partnership working in the building on this bill, and we're pushing to make sure that they pass it as soon as they can during the session, so we don't get to a situation at the end of the session where it's, you know, caught up in the end of the session controversy or, or conflict. So I'm, I'm pretty confident we're making good progress on that, that piece of legislation. So that's the big update. Other big issues you'll notice on page two of the report, House Bill two thousand and one is the homelessness package. This is the package the governor proposed about a month and a half ago, asked for a hundred and thirty million dollars. There's a hundred and fifty-five million dollars in this particular package. That's largely because the legislature heated calls to increase funding for homeless youth programs, which has been severely underfunded over the years. And so that's a twenty-five million dollar increase, although one point two million dollars of that is gonna be siphoned off and, and, and used for DHS staffers, which is something we're still trying to fix. We think all the money ought to go into communities and not go to bureaucracy in Salem, but we'll see where that goes. And then just two more quick things. The behavioral health discussions continue. You'll notice if you look at the bill tracking list that some of those bills are starting to move out of committee. For instance, a bill to allow more behavioral health and social work to be, folks to be trained at Portland State University that moved out of the committee this week. Most of those will go to Ways and Means, and my guess is they'll, they'll be kind of smushed into a, a larger funding package for behavioral health workforce, mental health workforce. And then ballot measure one-ten, there's been a work group that I've been attending every Thursday morning. There, I, I think they're kind of working around the edges. Nothing I've seen in, in their proposals are really major changes to ballot measure one-ten. They may get to that, but the work group hasn't gotten to those kind of major changes yet. So I'm probably forgetting a couple things, but, but for the most part, that, that's what we've got so far. And geez, now I've got lots of sun on my face. So after snowing six inches in, at my house two days ago, now I've got sun, so.
Happy springtime.
Yeah.
Almost spring. Great. Thank you very much for that update. Go ahead, Whitney.
All right, perfect. Commissioner DeBon, I think before we get started with the bill tracker report, do you want to touch on the congressionally-directed spending requests related to Core Three?
Yeah, so email from the, you know, Core Three group, a couple, a couple other jurisdictions are writing letters of support, ask for the Core Three project for congressionally-designated spending. So this is an ask for my fellow commissioner. So has there been a email formatted? So I, yesterday I was busy, busy, or a letter, I mean. So I haven't really even seen the content. What's the amount they're even asking for? Does somebody know?
Jen, do you, are you able to provide that summary?
Yep. So they are asked, sorry, my voice is very wonky. They are asking for two million dollars of the six-point-three-million-dollar capital construction cost for the Core Three EOC. So it's strictly for the EOC, and they specify that it's not funds being used for associated training facilities and props, just for that construction cost.
Great. Yeah, so as I say, I can acknowledge that they're trying to just piece together Phase One of construction, knowing that when these, and, and it's exciting because knowing if we get this pool of money together in the near future, we've got land use approvals coming, and all of a sudden it'll just kind of Phase One will come together. So Commissioner Darren, Commissioner Chang, any thoughts on this? This is congressionally-designated spending request for two million for Core Three. Commissioner Derek, Commissioner Chang, so this is, and I'm supportive, so this is my ask to look for another.
So where's that letter at?
So as I say, I got the email yesterday afternoon. I did send it to Jen and everybody asking for if there's a way to kind of get a pre-formatted one, so we may not have it yet.
Jen went ahead and formatted that, so we do have a draft that we can email out to the board and, and have some more visibility on this request.
Okay, I'll send it out right now so you have it.
Okay, yeah, so let's get back to it in, in a few then. Thanks for bringing that up. As I say, that was an email I got yesterday, and it was everybody knows that there's this little window of time, so it came in and said, we gotta respond to this. I said, well, I'll bring it up tomorrow.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Um, I think the other, before we get into the report, the other request I'm aware of is Janice had sent an email to the board yesterday outlining a request to testify on twenty-four sixty-three. Janice, do you want to speak to that? Request to testify, and I think to add the logo to a one-pager related to that bill?
Yeah, the bill is the result of, thank you, the result of the work of the Behavioral Health Transformation Subcommittee that was convened by the legislature last round. And there was a subcommittee of the committee that was focused specifically on addressing administrative burden or intricacies, redundancies. Quite a bit of work was done. It was a collaborative work group of OHA, coordinated care organizations, individuals with lived experience, people who are behavioral health providers. There was a member of the judicial system. So a pretty broad work group that came up with some recommendations for reducing administrative burden and just cleaning up some processes that have been left unattended. It's not a very interesting bill, but it's critical work and hasn't been done for some time. And the reason for a bill is that I think the concern is that if the OHA is not directly directed through legislation to have some accountability around doing the necessary work, the administrative burden really just will continue to amplify and grow exponentially. So I would like to, I would like support for this. I'd like to add the Deschutes County logo to the one-pager that's being created by AOC MHP or by the work group actually, and I'd like to be able to testify. If I testify, I'll prepare probably just some bullet points that I'll share with commissioners and county administration, and will mostly focus on the impact on client services, access to care, and clinician burnout, and leaving the public sector to go do other things. So that's the request. And I sent the one-pager with all of the draft comments in it yesterday afternoon.
Yes, at four seventeen.
Yeah. Doug?
Do you have? Yeah, thanks, Janice. Thanks for raising this. I think this is absolutely imperative. I spent a half an hour yesterday with Ways and Means co-chair, Tana Sanchez, talking about the inefficiency of state agencies in dealing with local governments, counties, cities, nonprofits. And it's just, it's that totally out of hand, completely out of control, the amount of delay for any of the legislatively-approved funding or projects. You know, what she was telling me is agencies were coming in asking for between twenty and thirty-five percent administrative costs to hire new staffers to implement the money that they've previously allocated. That money should be going out of the counties, and there, there ought to be a streamlining effort, and so I think this is a great first step.
Good. Well, yeah, I'm supportive of this. It does, looks like it's the technical, you know, overhead bill, I guess, is what I'm starting to see here. So I understand it's a good discussion to be had, and, you know, if, if we're gonna manage people in, in lower levels in the community, yeah, this is the, the push and pull of who's responsible, but who's really putting the resources on the ground, too.
Thank you.
Any thoughts, Commissioner Chang, Commissioner?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm supportive of this. I'm not optimistic that this can, this can move because the the countervailing pressure is for accountability. So why do we have these ridiculously burdensome reporting requirements? Because some people don't believe that don't believe that our people at the county, our contractors, state, you know, state employees are capable people who can be trusted. And so that's where we get extremely cumbersome accountability requirements from, you know, people who don't believe in the public sector. So I, I guess what I would anticipate is that there will be a lot of public, you know, there'll be a lot of pressure from people who are skeptical of, of the public sector, who believe that, you know, public programs and public employees should be scrutinized out the yin yang, who push back against measures like this. So I, I am fully supportive, but I, I just want us to go into this, you know, with political eyes open, and also, you know, kind of understanding what kind of counterarguments might be made against it.
Um, Janice, I appreciate the line that does say define and clarify the roles, responsibilities, and to ensure accountability. So I appreciate it immensely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Proceed. Thank you.
Great.
And then transitioning into the bill report, page thirteen of this week's bill report, the updated report that Jen sent out. There's a new bill that Public Health is tracking. Tom, do you want to talk a little bit about House Bill twenty-six thirty-eight?
Yes. Hello, Tom Kuhn from Public Health. House Bill twenty-six thirty-eight essentially requires schools to have properly functioning HVAC systems in place that will be determined by the State Board of Education, and these must be in place by January of two thousand and twenty-nine. This is particularly relevant in central Oregon when we have our smoke intrusions, which we are having more and more regularly every year. Having high-functioning ventilation systems can really provide healthier air quality during these events, and this reduces long-term health risks related to smoke particulate matter that, you know, we all experienced during these times when, when we're breathing in smoke. This is very damaging to our lungs. And when we have a high-functioning HVAC system in a school, that actually transforms a school into a safe air shelter or clean air shelter. And this is a great place to have our kids during these events because they're learning, and they're learning in an environment where their quality is good versus most homes that probably do not have as high-functioning of systems. And also wanted to point out that our environmental health program has been working with the schools during these smoke events to conduct clean air assessments. This is a program area we're really developing, and we now even have a clean indoor air quality component to the environmental health program that will keep expanding over time and having our schools have upgraded and better functioning HVAC systems is just a win for everyone. So we think the timeline of January two thousand and twenty-nine is sufficient for any schools that need upgrades to have this done. I'm not saying that every school needs an upgrade, but there are probably some that it could benefit them. So just want to be prepared to support this bill if needed. And are there any questions?
So I'm gonna jump right on a response here. Looks like a unfunded mandate to me. I mean, it's nice for the state legislature to say, we want good air for kids. I want good air for kids. But who does this? The legislature says, you've got to do this. Taxes are, build the construction of the facilities. So that means taxpayers are, are being asked to add a little bit more to the capital for school. So I just, great idea, but I, just the scenario here, it looks like it may be political.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna ask, what, what drivers are there currently for schools to want to make sure that their HVAC systems are, are, are functioning at, you know, at the highest levels possible? I, I, do we? I, I guess my, you know, is similar, my question is along similar lines. Do we need a mandate? You know, on top of whatever motivations schools already have to accomplish this goal, or should we really be focused on things like, you know, getting them technical assistance and getting them funding so that they can do it?
Yes. Good points. Yes, there, that is one thing missing from this bill is the funding for it, and also I'm not aware of what the current standards are in place. I'm assuming that because they're asking that they are brought up to a certain level that maybe the standards are lower, but I could do more research and find out what are the current standards in place.
Well, we know responded to Sisters High School during fire events years ago and full-on, you know, gave them money so they could go get, you know, air filtration system in their facility. So we, I support it, but yeah, it's just the scenario of unfunded mandate.
Yeah, and also I, you know, I want to also mention that Senate Bill seven sixty-two provided, provided resources to get a whole bunch of HEPA air filters out to, out to residences in the community, and also to get those industrial air scrubbers to, you know, to our community that in many cases in the last year were, were used, were deployed to schools to kind of add to their systems to in, ensure that there was good air quality in those schools. So I, you know, I would, I would love, you know, kind of to follow this line of thought. I would love to know whether there were ways for us to support there being more, more funds added to that program to get even more HEPA filter out, filters and, and more industrial air scrubbers into our community. But that, that might take us away from this bill, but kind of, you know, along the same lines of intent.
Well, so how, maybe with this discussion, put it in a number two neutral for now, just to see, because this could, this idea could be rolled into some other funding package or effort. I mean, the idea is good, clean air in the schools, yes. But just how does it get funded?
Okay, no, it's still, it's just going in the right direction at this point, but I definitely see some of the shortcomings of it.
Thanks, Tom. Work for that neutral at this time?
Yeah, I, I'm, I, I would, I would say neutral on this bill, and I, I would encourage us to do some homework on how we can, you know, how we can get more resources to our community for HEPA air filters and industrial air scrubbers.
When I think of, you know, basically, the multiple school districts associated with Deschutes County are probably, you know, in the top percentiles of, of resources for school districts around the state. So, you know, as I say, if we need to respond with their quality issues, we do, we have, and they probably have resources to manage this. I'm just saying, relative to some other school districts around the state, I don't know that we're the lead of a high-needs area.
Well, we, we may have the worst smoke conditions also across the state, but yes, response should be proportional to the problem.
That's fine. Okay, well, moving on, Commissioner Dare, any thoughts?
Whitney, what page did you say that was on?
That was on page thirteen, I believe. Yep, thirteen.
And it's number two-six-three-eight?
Yes.
Okay, it's not on my page thirteen. I'm looking at March.
Jen sent out an updated report at the end of the day yesterday. I think this was a late add potentially yesterday in terms of adding to the report, so that may be why, Commissioner Dare.
I just printed this this morning when I got to the office from Angie.
Okay.
Yeah, anyway, well, I honestly, I think our kids need to start graduating from school and learning how to read and write, and I think if we don't start focusing on what the real issues are in our schools, is the smoke isn't good, but our kids are at the bottom of the pack now. So, and they were at the bottom, and, you know, I would love to see more emphasis on our children graduating with actual skills. So I'd like to look at it neutral for the moment.
Same page.
Next, I mean, I, I, I do want, just want to tie onto that by, by saying that, you know, some of the we know that the kids who are struggling most to stay in school and to graduate from school are often kids who have marginal housing. And if they're in marginal housing, they are probably the ones who are dealing with smoke the most at home. So the idea of providing them with a, a, a place where they can escape the smoke and learn is actually really beneficial to the goal of graduating kids from, from high school.
Thanks.
Thank you. So next.
Okay, the last bill that's a new add for this week is on page five, and this is under the assessor's office. I had a brief conversation with Assessor Scott Langton last week, and he offered to attend one of our upcoming meetings if the board would like him to. House Bill two thousand and eighty-eight would provide a mechanism to have there be more financial support for assessment and taxation functions within counties. So this would direct the treasurer to withhold three percent of all property tax monies for use by counties for administration of property tax laws. And so I, I put this on the, the report this week just as a to watch, just to put it on the board's radar. In looking in all this, it looks like Lane County, Lynn County, Washington County, AOC, the assessors and tax collectors have all supported this bill. There are some cities that look like are in opposition to the bill, but a lot of support from counties in terms of those that have submitted testimony on this bill. So just putting it on the board's radar. If you'd like to have Scott come and discuss in greater detail, happy to coordinate that, but just wanted to make sure it was something that we were tracking.
Uh, yeah, my first thought is we need to analyze what this means, you know? I mean, maybe we do this naturally already in our budgeting process, or does this really shift some funds that have impacts? I don't have a feel for that yet. But yeah, to watch seems like a good starting point, missionaries.
I, I'd be interested in hearing Scott's recommendation on this one.
Yep, okay.
And so would I, since Scott is one of the major assessors of the state. Yeah, I'd like to know what he thinks this really means, and maybe watch isn't adequate enough that we need to be talking out against it, but I want to hear from Scott. He's not on the call, is he?
So let's learn about this for sure. And we could bring that to Monday work session possibly, just whenever, as soon as possible.
We're happy to coordinate that. I think in essence, it would provide more funding for his office and the functions that they, they oversee, but happy to have him come in and speak to what that would mean.
That's interesting one, really, because, you know, is this, there's a, you know, other funds that come through the state every year, Assessment and Tax AT, Assessment and Tax Funds or whatever, that, you know, there's contracts with the state. Is this shifting state to, to local or not? That, so there's a lot of maybe moving parts on this one.
Well, we'll follow up on that. Doug, anything to add there?
No, I, I had seen this bill, and I know the city, let's leave Orient Cities was opposed to it just because they don't believe it's kind of part of the the general accepted distribution of property tax monies, but I, I didn't attend the hearing, but I'll chat with a few people and be prepared to have a little more detail the next time.
Sounds great. That's, closes us out for any new bills that have been added to this week's report. And really, I think the other thing I was planning to do today was just to look at upcoming. Oh, it looks like Chad may have one. Chad?
Yeah, so last week we talked about HB thirty-two twenty-nine on air quality fees, and I thought I had loaded that into Bill Tracker. I sent you an email, Whitney, about that. And also, Doug, you, you had sent an email to somebody with AOC about it. You know, this, this question about eighty percent fee increases, I simply don't see, but I wanted to get it on Bill Tracker just to watch the progress on it, and also get perhaps some clarification on that fee increase.
Chad, I think it's in, but we need to do something on the backend to accept the review, is my guess. Jen, can you check on that while we're on the call?
Yeah, I just checked, and it's in there, and it's been assigned, but it has not been reviewed.
Okay.
I can add that in real quick if we have the review or the priority or position.
Okay, no, I just wondered with my inept technical abilities, it didn't get loaded in. So, yeah, if you just get it on there at, at your, your convenience there. And Doug, did you hear back from AOC at all about the, the question you had on the eighty percent fee increase? Because I, again, I don't see it there.
Yeah, I, I heard that there was an eighty percent increase for counties that had Title V air quality permits. But the county said they'd look into it, and I have not heard back from them, so I will follow up with them today.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that in the bill itself.
And Chad, can you recap one more time the proposed priority and position from Solid Waste on that bill?
I, I think you, I put it as to watch.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sure. I'm transitioning into hearings for the week ahead. Looking through the report, there's some Health Services bills that have hearings coming up, and I'll defer to Health if there's an interest. I think we already spoke to one of those bills in terms of any additional testimony or letters of support. And then the bill related to video lottery funding and Fair and Expo, that looks like it's up for a hearing this week. And so just wondering, Jeff, if you have any desire to engage or submit testimony related to House Bill twenty-five ten, but that, that was really all in looking at the report that flagged for me. So Jeff, if there's any interest from Fair and Expo, this might be a good time to talk about that with the board, and apart from that, I'll open it up to the group if there's anything else that, that we should discuss today. Jeff, maybe multitasking there. Commissioner Chang?
Uh, go ahead and, and process this item with Jeff first, and then I have other stuff.
Okay, so House Bill twenty-five ten, we have it as a to support, and this would I think adjust the cap on lottery funding that goes to fairs, which there's currently a cap set there. So Commissioner Adair, I, did you, have you, you've engaged with this bill previously?
Yes, I sent a letter in support of it. I've been to a lot of county fairgrounds on our side of the mountain, and they, they desperately need more than fifty thousand dollars to do some upgrades. And our fairgrounds could use it, too. I believe it goes up, last year it would have been like three hundred and fifty thousand that each fairgrounds would have received. So, you know, it's, can be significant help for maybe twenty-eight of the counties.
Okay. So just seeing if there's an interest there for staff to.
When's the testimony, Whitney?
It looks like it's on the seventh.
A Tuesday.
Thank you.
And what time?
Is it one? Is it one P M? Okay.
And then, yeah, it'd be great if uh, you know, maybe there's a fair board member engaged and wanting to testify also, so maybe look for a partner if if somebody wants to.
That's great. I'll follow up with Jeff uh offline after today's call. Commissioner Chang, turn it over to you.
Well, I, before I move on to other stuff, I I on this particular item, I I would like to say again that Jeff emphasized to us that this is uh this additional lottery funding is not necessarily needed for our fairgrounds, but he he did think it would be beneficial to other fairgrounds uh in, you know, counties in the in the state. Uh, and I want to emphasize that um if we're taking more lottery dollars for fairgrounds, um primarily for fairgrounds and other parts of the state, then it means there is less money for schools, for economic development, for parks, and for a variety of other functions that are paid for out of lottery, you know, that there's only a finite size pie of of lottery lottery funds. So I, you know, I would like us to, I would like Deschutes County to be remain neutral on this bill. But um, you know, individual commissioners can can testify on things as they see fit. And if my fellow commissioners want to vote to support this bill, then uh, you know, my no vote on that, you know, is it it it's still a majority of the board.
So uh, yeah, for a little discussion, I s- I understand what you're saying there. Uh, you know, video video lottery is dependent uh too much in the state of Oregon philosophically. I don't even like this revenue source as something that we lean upon. But then when we get down to the thirty-six counties in the state of Oregon and a fairgrounds and the economic opportunity, uh four-H FFA, uh sense of community, the event itself, uh, you know, out of fairgrounds, I really just think that's just foundational to to what makes America, you know, county fairgrounds and events at the fairground. So that's why I'm excited to to know that there's a discussion to possibly invest in them. But I mean, I, and I, so I support, I support this, but it's a legislative decision.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would say if we're getting dollars, if we're getting lottery dollars through economic development, yeah, under the economic development category, doesn't doesn't restrict any county from deciding to use those lottery dollars that they're receiving for economic development purposes on their fairgrounds, so I I.
Well, and we need to watch out for the legislature uh always justifying spending these monies. And I know that uh like the veterans uh funding went uh to a vote of the people. But this is gaming, uh and we don't have the authority to do gaming locally, it's a statewide system now, and it it's pulled in many directions. So uh, you know, I I support the legislature having the decisions based on this. Uh, but as I say, philosophically, it's a shame that it's such a foundational revenue expectation by so many.
I agree. Yeah, but I agree, but if it's happening, I, you know, the the places where those dollars are going currently, I think are uh extremely important.
Commissioner Chang, just to follow up on your um comment related to, you know, existing video lottery funding that the county receives. That is something that Jeff and I have discussed conceptually is sort of if down the road, um, there may be the possibility for Fair and Expo to propose specific project-based uh requests as the part of the board's video lottery funding exercise. And so that's something we may be circling background with the board on later to discuss in more depth.
Yeah, I I we can definitely talk about that. I mean, I I do think that we need to look at the entire package, you know, uh, you know, uh, of of revenue for the fairgrounds. I mean, it's um, it is billed as an enterprise department, um, but you know, receives a substantial amount of transient room tax revenue, for example. So uh, you know, I I I would want to see the whole picture and and, you know, and and have the opportunity to evaluate that.
Okay, next topic for you then.
Yeah.
It looks like he's rejoined the call. Jeff, I'm not sure if you were tracking that you might have had to step out.
Yeah, I apologize, I had another call, so I was trying to listen and and get off of that. So I heard most of that, um, I'll follow up with you in a little bit um to get the pieces I may have missed, I apologize.
Yeah, not a problem.
Yeah.
Commissioner Chang, did you have a?
Yeah, so uh other items, uh, I wanted to mention uh this this past week, I did uh or, you know, a couple days ago, actually, sorry, yesterday, um, I testified on the Oregon Department of Forestry uh budget bill HB fifty-twenty, and I just wanted uh my fellow commissioners to know that I had uh expressed support for continued funding for the landscape resiliency program um that uh was uh came out of Senate Bill sound sixty-two um that uh Deschutes County, in partnership with uh eighteen other entities, received six point two-five million dollars from uh to complete treatments. Uh, basically, there were about eight thousand acres of treatments uh spanning between mm southern Jefferson County and northern Klamath County that could not have been completed without those landscape resiliency funds. And um they ha- the the legislature has uh proposed, or sorry, the governor has proposed reducing um the funding level for that landscape resiliency program this year from twenty million to twelve million. Um, so I I testified that I thought they should at least fund it at the twelve million dollar level and and if there were opportunities to increase that to to bump it up. And those those eight thousand acres that uh this uh um this program supported uh our uh private lands, uh uh local government lands that stitched together the landscape in really critical ways to uh uh help accomplish overall resiliency across the region. So um it was a great, in my opinion, a great investment of state funds uh from the last cycle. And I I I also just wanted to ask whether we are taking a position on HB two thousand and one or not. Uh, you know, is um homelessness response is, I, in in my opinion, a central uh interest and focus for us. Um, so I I wanted to know whether we were actually going to do anything about that bill, um, study it closely, you know, um, ask for things uh to be added or changed if uh we don't like the way it looks in certain ways, um, and potentially support it.
So last night at the Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council meeting, COIC Board, uh, the continuum of care is the federal uh federal dollars coming through the the Homeless Leadership Coalition, long history here in central Oregon. But the uh OEM, Oregon Emergency Management, is the kind of the avenue for these dollars, uh, and they're going to use this continuum of care path, the avenue. Uh, and then there's going to be a multi-agency coordination group, the MAC, which is an OEM term for when you get into an incident, you have a uh multi-agency coordination. Uh, so I I just fill it in the concepts of what's what's even happening here. So the MAC has already been created with uh uh people representing interests in the tri-county area. Because remember, this isn't just Deschutes when it comes to the governor's orders on this, it's the central Oregon tri-county area. So this was just a discussion we had last night at the uh COIC Board meeting, and it was just for information because as I say, the the state legislature is talking about this funding. We're talking about how we would spend this funding, but obviously they haven't approved it yet. So, yeah, I mean, we're engaged, obviously, I don't know if we, I mean, a thumbs up or a thumbs down on this is, I don't know, I mean, what does that mean? You know, as I say, it looks like it's gonna happen. We should look at parts and pieces of it, for sure.
Yeah, I'm 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 not uh all of the thought and planning that's going into um who would manage the money and where it's going to go. Um, that is extremely important work, I'm glad that's happening, but I'm just at talking about the 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 legislation itself. Uh, I am, you know, uh, it it certainly seems like the governor and many of our legislators are are really interested in in moving that bill, but that doesn't mean that uh us demonstrating support or opposition or asking for change isn't uh meaningful.
Any thoughts, Commissioner Dare?
So it looks like it has a hearing on Tuesday also at one. Which is interesting, so. I'm doing more than what's just been on here, Doug, do you have any um further comments with this?
Back and away, and so House Bill two thousand and one is the implementation of the governor's proposed one hundred and thirty million dollar plan to address homelessness. Um, House Bill two thousand and one and the accompanying uh funding bill, which I believe is House Bill fifty-nineteen, ends up with a total of about two hundred million dollars. There have been a couple changes made from the governor's original proposal. For instance, she declared an emergency that only covered a certain number of counties. So money has been put in this bill to cover the other counties that weren't covered. Uh, money for homeless youth has been added to the bill, because something I mentioned in the last call, twenty-five billion dollars, which is something that Jbar J and other others, the region that supported. Uh, and then there are uh there's money in in the bill for agricultural workforce housing in rural areas, which is something that had been an issue that had been left out of the governor's proposal. Uh, the bill passed on a largely bipartisan vote in the House Committee on Housing. Uh, there were two Republicans who voted no, but they uh indicated that they uh had not had enough time to look at the bill and wanted to look at it further as it moved down the process. So fairly broad bipartisan support uh funding from those uh programs would come to Deschutes County and a number of areas. I just put in the chat uh a pretty good, pretty good article that appeared in the Capital Insider within the last day or so that um outlined the specific provisions. Uh, so the bill's a ways and means, it will probably pass through the Ways and Means Committee, the Subcommittee next Tuesday, be the Full Ways and Means Committee next uh next Friday on the Senate and House floors a week after, and I would expect it to hit the governor's uh desk uh later. Um, as long as I have the floor, I'll mention that there's another bill that Whitney and Jan, if we could put on the list for review, staff review, and that's House Bill thirty-four fourteen, because this is kind of a a companion bill that they tried to put into House Bill two thousand and one. This is really a land use, a land use bill, and unfortunately, it points the finger at cities and counties as being the 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 bad guy, the responsible party for why Oregon doesn't have enough housing. And it it creates a brand-new uh department within LCDC to be able to investigate and punish cities and counties that they they don't do enough on housing, so.
That seems reasonable.
Yeah, right, so it's it's your fault, it's not LCDC or Luba's fault. So that's something I'll I want to take a look at. But back to two thousand and one, um, I think it's a it's a fairly thoughtful, balanced approach. They took some ideas from both sides, stuck it in there, um, and it has broad support, so that's just background on on that bill.
So Commissioner Chang, do you want to take a position on it?
Uh, I would like to take a position on a two thousand and one. I also would like, I I know that Cheyenne has been tracking this pretty closely. I I would love to hear her perspective on um what it does for us, what it doesn't do for us, whether we, there are other things we should be seeking from such a package.
Sure, good morning. You know, I think when I look at this, it is a large package. Uh, there's a handful of policy tools that it is trying to express in one uh large bill. It does create more transparency and more detailed research um from a housing needs perspective, which is always useful to develop policy. It also has a number of policy tools that help to accelerate housing production, including um making funds available uh and uh loan funds, I would say, uh not grant funds. Um, it also emphasizes modular building, which helps to overcome the very long timelines. Typically, it takes about eighteen months to produce a housing unit, and modular can reduce that down to anywhere from eight to to twelve months. So it's another uh tool in the toolkit for counties, cities, and and local communities to invest in housing production, which we sorely need at every level here in central Oregon. Um, there are a a handful of tenant protections, which I think are going to be really critical in the coming months as we look at the potential for recession. And we know that in recession times, even if it's moderate, we can expect to see a great number of households who are already on the on the verge because of COVID and uh the recent uh shift from uh moratoriums on evictions. Um, as we come out of the COVID response, I do worry that the recession or potential for recession um will push low-income families, especially um those with minor children, into um eviction status. And without those protections, um, ex- expanding those protections and expanding rental assistance, access to rental assist assistance programs, um, we could be looking at pretty long-term effects from uh, you know, we could see an increase in homelessness here locally, especially family homelessness, which we have the fewest shelter beds to support. Um, and it it does also direct some of the funds. I think that the emphasis has been on the funding, um, but there are a handful of other policy tools and protections that I think are valuable to the residents of central Oregon and and Deschutes County, um, and that we could be making specifically uh this office, but certainly Deschutes County more broadly could be taking advantage of to stimulate housing produc- uh production and to protect residents from harm in eviction proceedings.
Yeah, uh, and and so that was, that was your 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 snapshot on two thousand and one, not this additional bill that that Doug just mentioned, correct?
Correct, and sorry, I'm tracking two different meetings right now.
Okay. Yeah, so I I I'm with that, I I would, I would say I would like to express support for two thousand and one. If uh the full board doesn't want to do that, I can just do that individually.
Well, it looks like it's a go, there may be uh a lot of moving parts in there, um. Uh, you know, the, and it's it's about housing production, you know, so I I think about the world we're in right now. City of Ben wants us to, you know, do a this camp south town and, you know, find an operator and stuff. And this is a whole different domain than than we've been talking about the last few days. So housing production and uh stability. So I mean, I'm supportive of showing a thumbs up on this, I don't know that I would testify, it sounds like it's a freight train rolling down the tracks at this time.
So, um, Doug, do you know where they're going to get the money for the modular housing, the grants or the loans? Where's that fun, is that funding in here?
Yeah, the funding is in the bill, I will have to take a look at the amount. Yeah, oh, no, that would be, modular housing is in House Bill two thousand and one.
Right.
Uh, they they already have a a large site uh out at the port of Portland, I think it's Terminal Two, that they're converting into a construction site. It's public, private partnership, they're going to use mass timber uh for the construction of these modular housing units. So it's pretty innovative, it's public-private partnership, they've gotten some federal money, and I I believe the money the state is investing is general fund dollars.
All right.
I'll double check on that.
Well, with all that said about modular houses, I sure hope that my uh Senate Bill six seventy-three gets um gets to go through. It does seem to make sense, over three hundred of them, and as Cheyenne just said, um, those can be done a lot faster than actually building houses, as we all know here, so I I'm happy to support that.
So a position to support looks like is the proposal, and we'll we'll get to that point. Uh, knowing that, as I say, this thing's rolling anyways.
Yeah, then there's, I think there's great value in being able to show up later in later policy discussions and say, hey, we supported HB two thousand and one, um, so we're with you. And then on this other thing, we want to ask for this, this, and this, so there's, you know.
Referring to who's who, when you say we're with you.
Well, uh, so if we write a letter in support of HB two thousand and one, then when there's other policy discussions later on that uh we might have concerns about, or might might have requests for modifications, we can say, hey, we were with you on two thousand and one, right? So we're demonstrating that we're, we, we're, we're, you know, kind of working in the same direction, but now we want to ask for this tweak on this other thing.
So I was just, yeah, I wondered who you were referring to, so the governor's office and the legislature?
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering. So uh, yeah, taking a position positive uh uh of support and uh at uh priority two is different than writing a letter, so now you're writing a letter?
I I I think, I think demonstrating support would be valuable, um, and like I I I I think I think demonstrating support would be valuable. Um and like I said, I. Uh I hadn't, I wasn't tracking that there was going to be a hearing, but I I'll see what I can do to make that hearing. Um if we could issue a letter, if we were actually in support, then I think that that would be great.
And I'm happy to help out with the a short letter. It will be, I guarantee you on Tuesday, it'll be a short timeframe and it'll probably give everyone a minute to testify. So it'll be a lot, a lot of folks, but I think uh testimony and a letter probably is, I I think Commissioner Chang, you're you're right that if we. Demonstrate support on this, uh the sponsors of the bill especially will probably remember that if we go back and ask for something. On our behalf down the road.
Okay, so so we'll I I support uh, you know, putting some kind of a letter together. We can talk about it on either pre-approve it or do it on Monday.
And I can offer staff testimony if that's helpful to the commissioners.
So you meaning you would be able to testify on our behalf? That would be great.
I'll prepare something and circulate it in advance.
Okay. And there may be a lot of testimony already in the record, not to. Be the plagiarism here, but uh some some great points that are already there that we don't have to recreate the wheel on.
Thank borrow and steal.
Yep. Em embrace and extend. Uh okay. Um. Anything else, Commissioner Chang, different topic or?
That's all I've got. Thanks.
So uh Doug Riggs, uh yesterday I had a conversation uh water reuse water in Bend. I don't know if you saw that email yet. Uh it was just the uh the system engineer came and sat down with me and the and Commissioner Chang, you and I asked DEQ about this. Uh come to find out the city of Ben's in that same spot. They're asking what's the path to put reuse water, class A reuse water. Uh you know, in in a canal for irrigation. And the answer is, we don't know. You know, they they're not going to say yes or no. They just don't know. Uh so this was a request by um. Uh Ned Dempsey, the this engineer representing the city of Ben, just. Trying to get clarity from DEQ on this topic. So it was, you know, not a bill at all, but it's uh since the legislative session is in, I handed it off. And an email to a few folks saying, uh so I sent an email to Representative Owens and Helm, so very specifically. Uh asking, is there a way to get? More clarity. Because, uh you know, I don't know is different than no, and it's different than yes. Uh and that was, there's the only ask at this time.
I I I believe I reported this back to my fellow commissioners at some point, but um i- if not, I apologize. Um uh Representative Helm with uh Representative Owen's support is moving a. A water recycling bill. Um this session and uh it will speak squarely to this situation. Um it, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't call it out as a specific demonstration project, but. Um it's uh there are opportunities to engage with that water recycling bill um to address. Essentially, the barriers that we are facing with this city of Ben North Unit Irrigation District partnership. Um to to move that forward. So I, you know, I. I I, like I said, I thought I had brought that up with my fellow commissioners in the past, but if not. Uh um I apologize.
Oh, not a problem. And if you did, I might not have been putting it in the same context as this topic, you know, because I know this topic. Uh so we're good. Uh you know, if there's a bill number, maybe we'll either share it with the city of Ben or advocate for ourselves. We'll see.
Doug, is that is that wa- is that Helm bill on water recycling on your radar?
Yeah, I don't think it's on our Deschutes County list. I think I've got it on a a couple of other tracking lists, so I'll I'll look at that this morning and make sure we. Slide that over and get staff to keep an eye on. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
I've got one more real quick and then we'll hand it off to Commissioner Dare if there's any other thoughts. Uh so House Bill three, three, two, one was mentioned. I don't know anything about it yet, so I'm just asking for uh uh Jen or Whitney just to look into it. Me, I can look it up, but I just mentioned. Got heard about it this morning, something about uh uh system operators, you know, water and sewer districts. Uh and I'm advocating on behalf of some of the the sewer districts, especially in our community. Uh the the concept that I'm here to advocate for is finding the next generation of operators. You know, with their retirement, and this is happening at nine one one, there's there's some of these positions that just aren't being filled in in the. Uh in the current environment. And, you know, we probably want these things to be running twenty-four seven in good fashion. So. I don't know what three, three, two, one is yet, but I'll do my homework on it and maybe bring it up next week for advocacy. Uh Commissioner Dare, any thoughts?
Um I don't know if Chris Duddy is on the call or not, but on the Eastern Oregon call, they've been really concerned with that diesel bill. I think it's Senate Bill eight oh one, that it's going to incredibly impact agriculture. And is Chris on the, is Chris part of this? Does he have any um information more on that?
I'm on the call. I I have not been tracking that one specifically yet, but there there are a a whole host of. Those types of bills that are just kind of hitting our radar and and uh. Um yeah, we'll put, we'll add that one to the list.
Okay, I I think there, um I think that's the one that EO is uh Eastern Oregon is incredibly concerned about.
Yeah, Commissioner, this is Doug. I I sat in on the hearing on some of these diesel concepts and and you're right, they were very, very controversial. Um it's and uh the, you know, the supporters are very. Firm in their belief that this is a great bill and the the opponents, you know, talked about all the ongoing existing efforts to. Uh replace older diesel engines with newer diesel engines, the modified fleets. Um and basically, the point they made was that uh as we are moving uh down the the pike. Uh these vehicles are being replaced anyway, so a mandate is unnecessary. So that I think that. In a nutshell boils down to the main part of the testimony. I haven't seen the bill come back up. Uh so I'll look again this morning and that.
Thanks, Doug.
Yep.
So uh this three, three, two, one has to do with water quality. So I don't, it was just a number that was mentioned to me and I hadn't done my homework yet. I don't think that's. The domain I'm I'm looking for. It's more wastewater operator credentials. So. Just a topic I'm advocating for. I don't know if there's any legislative efforts on this.
Well, um I I just took a quick, Whitney shared a a link for us and I just took a quick look at it. It's about. It's basically about uh providing technical assistance to small water utilities, which um is absolutely a a a valuable thing. I mean, I don't know whether we have an immediate uh nexus on that right now, but um. You know, for example, uh if the uh if the water district in Tumalo. Is interested in taking on um. Uh yeah, a wa- wastewater system as well, then uh you know, technical assistance to them to essentially. You know, you know, further in- increase their organizational capacity and professionalize their operation is not a bad thing. So.
Um and and I'm coming in from the city of Lapine. They've got uh operators on staff. But they don't have anybody that has credentials to be the certified operator, so they're contracting it out. And it and it was just pointed out that it's a, you know, it's just, it's a generational uh career. Shift time and it's been happening for the last ten years or so. I just talked to a gentleman this morning about that. So. It's just trying to bol- bolster the credential people running these operations is is where I'm coming from today.
Yeah, well, I mean, from that perspective, maybe we should, maybe we should support this bill. I mean, it sounds like.
I'm talking about wastewater, so this is referring to water. So. Yeah, we'll see.
Okay.
It's a topic.
I mean, that, you know, the 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 city of Lapine has a water utility too and and quite often those. Um you know, Mike Bittner at at, you know, Mike Bittner at the city of Ben, he oversees both. I I don't know the exact structure.
Take it the certified operator from the pine. Maybe that's how this happened recently. So. It's all good.
Yeah, I I don't know what the structure is like at the sea of Lapine, but basically if you're. You know, if you're increasing the organizational capacity of one water utility within a city, then it probably has spillover benefits to the other water. Utility within the city.
Good discussion. So it's nine o'clock right now. Anybody have anything else?
I had two quick follow-up items, but it looked like I saw raised hand from Doug, so I want to.
He might have to.
Um just in more for the board, um because I know other folks may have uh meetings circling back on the um request related to Core Three. If the commissioners and I know we've been on a call, so I apologize for that. If there's any feedback on that draft letter that Jen was able to email out. And then just a a flag that in your joint meeting with the city of Redmond next week, one of the items on the agenda is mutual legislative. Uh priorities with the city of Redmond. And so um while we have Doug, I know that the city of Redmond engages through Coco. So I thought it might be helpful to hear from him uh kind of where there's overlap. Um I reached out to John Roberts late yesterday and and he kind of highlighted. A few things, enterprise zone, industrial lands, related bills, semiconductors, which the board is aware of. You you drafted that letter of support. Um but those were kind of the main things that he highlighted and I just wanted to give Doug the opportunity if there's anything else that might be helpful for the board's awareness. As we head into that joint meeting next week.
Yeah, I think uh Whitney, I think those are all good topics. I think the other thing that I've I've heard back from the city of Redmond and all the cities is. Is housing is a big issue. Uh and uh you know, it's again, this gets back to that House Bill thirty four fourteen, which I mentioned a few minutes ago. The city's been clamoring for a more cooperative relationship with the state land use process. And in fact, passed House Bill forty seventy-nine back in twenty seventeen to fast track the inclusion of. Of land for affordable housing development and there's the project in Bend and then the North Point Project in Redmond, which. Uh you know, it's we've gone from twenty, actually twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-three. And it's taken us just as much time as it would have taken us to expand the UGB under the, under the traditional system. So there, I think there is frustration among the cities that at the inability of the state agencies to act quickly. And then the appeals process, which, you know, if you look at what happened in the city of Ben's land use process, where issues not raised during. The band process were then suddenly eligible to be raised as objections and and causing Luba delays. Uh things of that nature, I think, are things that cities would like to address. The the county would probably. Um be in agreement on those those types of issues, but housing homelessness, semiconductors, infrastructure, EC, uh those types of things. And and then the the entire Core Three project out at the airport around the airport is is uh a key issue for them as well.
We'll have a productive joint meeting uh. And thank you for, yeah, so you're you're the bridge for both these jurisdictions at this point, so thank you so much. Uh is there support for this Core Three letter for congressly designated spending request, the amount of two million dollars? I would possibly reword it and just even shorten it a little bit.
Oh, I thought it looked excellent. Uh and thank you for uh Lori Chavez, Dreamer's name got spelled right, so. Doing better. Great job.
We learned from our, yeah, mistakes. Any thoughts, Commissioner Chang?
Um I. A long time ago, when I was first talking to the folks who, you know, kind of the brains behind the the Core Three project, I said to them. Uh this is a good project. Um to me, it is a, it's more of a nice to have than a need to have. Uh compared to some of the other needs in the in the region, so I I would. I would not support um this project competing for uh limited funds with other priorities. In the region, so uh just given that, I I I believe that some of the other things that we have. Uh. Uh issued letters of support for in terms of congressionally directed spending requests are higher priorities for me.
Well, and I would conclude a letter of support, so it sounds like, yeah, two to one, but just the concept of shedding light on the ask, that's the same situation I've been in with all of them. You know, these are good, pretty well-defined ask. Everybody's in a different state, uh but I would support putting this letter out and if a signature of two of us, that'd be fine also. Okay.
And Commissioner Bone, um just because I think this is due, we have a quick turn on this. Are you supportive of us using your electronic signature on this letter?
I'll be in the office in an hour and a half.
Okay.
I'll sign it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Um I might add an align in there that Deschutes County is actually given the land and the value of the land that we donated to the project. So they know we already have money. We've already got our asset into the game. I think that. That's. We're just not signing a letter. We've actually done something about it.
And and just for clarification, Commissioner Bone, Bone, did you say you wanted to remove some extra lines in there? I did shorten it from what they originally sent, but I can narrow it down.
Uh yeah, so I guess, you know, the context of this is for the uh. Uh training building or at the, I'm, yeah, I don't have it in front of me right now, but. Add what Commissioner Dare wants. I'll come in and look at it and if it hangs together, fine, I'm not there. I'm not real motivated to remove words, but. I I possibly remove words, so. Okay, anything else for this meeting? Seeing none, well adjourned. We'll be back at a work session on Monday with Board of Commissioners. Have a great weekend, everybody.
Thank you.